Will the Committee of the Whole Finance for Wednesday, November 6, 2024, please come to order? Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Stugmeier?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
And Urichak?
Here.
You all had the opportunity to view the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Finance for October 15, 2024. May I have a motion to approve them?
I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, let's see. There's a need this evening for an executive session in regards to pending legal action. May I have a motion?
I move that we hold an executive session for a conference with the Director of Law concerning disputes involving this public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
Second?
Copley?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Stugmeier?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Oops, sorry. Urichak?
Yes.
We are now in executive session. Okay. Uh, next item on our agenda tonight is draft legislation. We'll start with the internal notes. Uh, would you like to handle that?
Yes. These are new internal notes for 2024. There's a general description there. The interest rate is the same as those previously presented for renewal. Three and a half percent. They're for one year. And, um, there are a couple here that we are proposing, a couple of the larger ones we're proposing to when we issue debt next year on the market, to take those external because they're, because our, we run a ratio of cash to internal notes and as our cash balance decreases, we need to be aware of the amount of internal debt that we carry.
Okay. Any questions? Which ones are going to be, if you want to move to external?
The 24 sewer lining project, $750,000, and the 23 sanitary sewer projects, College Wolf lining, $810,767. So it's about 1.5 million.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Stugmeier, most of that has to do with, uh, our, uh-
Service? Yep.
Would you like to take care of that?
Yeah, we'll take it.
And we're gonna read those, correct? All in order?
Yes, please.
One time?
One time, okay. Recommendation to suspend and call on that, or do you want to go?
You can, uh, we're okay if you go through readings.
Well, let's, let's, let's go three on them. Yep, absolutely. We'll move those to second then.
Okay, the next one, uh, next ordinance, anybody have anything on that?
Um, that, that would be an ordinance that was adopted last month and somehow I pulled an older version that my assistant auditor had prepared and it, the interest rate was off slightly and there's recommended language from our, um, bond counsel that had not been updated either. So we're repealing that ordinance and replacing it with item number three, the next one, so that we get the interest rate to agree with the rate that the county is charging residents and we correct that language.
Questions? Mr. Urichak, you want to do that?
I can do that.
Okay. And then the, uh-
I'm sorry, that's 24-156.
And the next one?
Um, yes. I handed out a worksheet to show, uh, council members and the administration has a copy as well of, uh, we are amending the 2024 income tax allocation. Um, you can see there's one, two, three minor changes. Uh, the largest one, 1.9 million, we're taking out of an allocation of revenue. We're going to make that a cash transfer. There, that will come later in the year with our annual transfer ordinance because it's such a large amount and it's, it's related to capital expenditure. Um, so we're just trying to clean this up and make it more consistent in the future. Um, and then the other change was the 219,490, the, some airport improvements we'll move to next year, so we won't need those income tax dollars this year.
Mr. Rosberg? It sounds like, uh, you should do that. Three readings, okay?
That is fine.
Okay. Do you want to move that to second, Mr. Rosberg?
Yes, sir.
That'll be ordinance 24-157.
We skipped number three.
Yeah. We did?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Oh.
No, that's-
Well, you said, you had said that you were replacing it with the next one.
Yeah.
It's number 24-156, but-
Two and three I spoke of, I referenced it in my description.
Seven, two.
So if you're 150-
Three replaces two.
Three replaces two.
Yes.
So we're just gonna repeal one and then we'll have to adopt a new one.
Repeal number two and replace it with item number-
Okay. Number three is 24-157.
Seven, correct.
And what's the recommendation on that?
On which?
On 157, number three. Can it go-
Number three? Um, you can, I mean, last time you adopted it on first reading, so-
Is there a timetable on that?
Um, I think we're okay if we go through December, the first meeting in December, we should be okay, if that's what you prefer.
What would you like to do?
Um, I mean, we've already adopted it prior to this, so I'll just suspend it.
That's gonna be John.
Yeah.
157.
Okay, then, the next one, uh-
Number four.
Number four?
That's, that's the one I'm gonna take.
That's Rossburg.
Rossburg, yeah.
That's 158, then.
That'll be 24-158.
And the next one, Ms. Fix?
I'll let Mr. Testa speak to that one.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This is the introduction of the 2025 proposed budget. So this is our appropriation ordinance for the expenses that are largely outlined in the budget book that was passed out. I say largely because since the budget was, book was passed out at the beginning of October, there have been some small changes that have occurred, uh, during the interim period, but we have not really gone through, uh, any of the operating budgets for the Service Department. Those budget review meetings are scheduled later this month at the, um, Public Service Committee meeting, which I believe is on the, uh, 18th. And then we've got a council meeting and then we have the Public Ways, uh, meeting. Uh, so a lot of the Service Department, uh, operating pieces, parts really have not been discussed and I would expect that there would be some changes based on council's review. Um, I mentioned that, so, you know, typically what we've done in the past is introduce the legislation at the first meeting in November, goes through a second reading, uh, at the second meeting of November, and typically, uh, council has looked at, uh, voting on that, uh, at the first meeting in December. So, um, we're presenting it now because we're running out of year, basically, but, uh, I do expect-
Thank you. So my proposal is, uh, council, um, we'll read the first time tonight. We'll have committee meetings. Our next council meeting and Committee of the Whole will take extra time, whether it's a half hour, an hour, uh, and we'll discuss any changes or anything we'd like to add to the budget, uh, at that time and then move forward. You know, we'll read it again on a second time, if everybody's happy with that.
Yeah. Mr. President, I, I don't feel that we're ready to start reading the budget yet because safety has not had any fire discussion yet. Numerous service side has not had any discussion yet.
So- That's true.
I concur.
I just don't think it's right to start reading something right now. Because I, I personally feel that there's several million dollars in that proposed budget that needs to be looked at. Several million, not one million, several million.
I, I think what's been done traditionally is, is it gets it on the reading just so that the general public is kind of alerted, hey, we're starting to talk about the budget, the budget's on, on the agenda. Um, and as those, there's a couple that have not been through it recently, but as is very important to do is, is you continue to go through, uh, committee throughout the, the months, uh, and then any adjustments are made and then we normally have a, you know, a good accounting as far as what those adjustments have been, so you know exactly what it is. Um, but I think the main thing is, is I think everybody feels it's important, as do I, that there's at least three readings on, on a budget. And so to be able to get, um, the readings in, you need to kind of start doing that. Um, otherwise, you know, you'll have to have some special meetings, you know, which is certainly fine, but I'm, I'm just saying traditionally it's, at least gets introduced so that the public is alerted that the budget's being discussed and, um, and that they have, you know, that six-week period of time that, uh, to be able to be aware of that.
I, I do concur with what you said, but I've bought this up every year since I've been on council. We need to start the budget earlier. We need to have these discussions so that everyone's on the same page.
Well, as you well know, we, we start in April.
You keep saying tradition, tradition, tradition.
We're starting in February.
We would be fine doing, um, the second, the third reading at the second meeting in December. We can push the, the budget, the final budget reading to that meeting.
That could be okay for HR?
Yes.
HR is okay then? Because sometimes depending upon the dates, that second meeting, I don't know what does that mean.
We have to be ready to read at our next meeting for the first reading regardless, or else it's gonna be a bunch of special meetings to make sure it goes through.
Right.
Not necessarily. Yeah. I mean, it could not necessarily-
The time crunch is not our, our problem, our situation. We did not create that.
Well, but we're still gonna have to have special meetings to read it three times regardless if we caused the problem or not.
No.
No, she said we could pass it to the second reading and, or the second meeting in December, so it would be fine.
We have to have everything situated by next council meeting to do the first reading.
Now, this would be the first reading.
No. We're saying if we don't read it tonight, we've gotta read it at the next week council meetings. So are we gonna be ready to do a first reading?
Keep moving.
Is everyone gonna be okay with doing the first?
We'll have the same argument.
He's gonna have, yeah, Ralph will have the same argument at next council meeting.
Because we, we don't meet until the 18th on, uh, on services. When does Ways meet?
20th.
20th. Safety meets next week, so we'll be okay with safety.
So then your first reading would be the first meeting in December, which means we're gonna have to have special meetings.
Yeah. Mr. President, I, I will also say that the ultimate, uh, ordinance that's presented to council for their vote will be different than what you're reading in now because it will reflect the changes that council, uh, has requested, uh, to the budget proposal we put forth. So I, I mentioned that, just so you know, that, uh, there is a, a process in place to modify the original ordinance to reflect council's wishes before they're presented with the budget to vote on.
This doesn't obligate us to anything, it just makes the public aware that the process is officially starting.
That's correct.
Theoretically, we could go four readings then, if we're okay doing the last meeting in December.
Since we can go to the second, second meeting in December.
Yeah, you can go four readings.
So I think it's important that we get this right, so I'm just gonna pull it from the agenda and we'll read it for first time, possibly, then our next council meeting. Okay? All right. Let's move on to item six. Who's gonna take that?
This is the annual, um, transfer of the interest that's collected and pulled in the general fund and the total interest earned, this is 2022 interest, uh, was over 752,000. We're transferring out 601,702 to the various funds based on their average cash balance and that leaves remaining in the general fund, 151,074.
Okay. Any questions? Uh, David, or Ms., sorry. Would you like to call that one?
That'll be 24-159.
And then again, the next one, is it you?
It's you.
Yeah.
Number seven?
Yeah, this, this is, um-
Let me handle that.
Yeah, with building and planning.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
Uh, this is a supplemental appropriation request for the Building and Planning Department. Uh, we've done one of these, uh, within the last six weeks or so, but the, uh, most recent invoice that we received from Medina County's Building Department for services that they've assumed, uh, from us, uh, was higher than we thought it was gonna be. Came in at about $3,500, which basically leaves us with about $350 to pay for November's invoice. Uh, so this increase, uh, would give us the additional funds to cover November's invoice, which we'll get at the beginning of December and ideally, uh, have funds to carry over into January to cover, uh, what we expect would be, uh, reduced activity and fees for the month of December.
Thank you. Ms. Hanlon, would you like to take that one, please?
That'll be 24-160.
Are we moving that to second?
Is there any time, uh, urgency here?
It, well, I would say that, you know, ideally before the end of the calendar month because we'll likely get the bill, uh, sometime around, uh, the first week of December.
Would you put that on second, please? And then the next one?
The, the next two ordinances go together. Um, they were request, requests made by the Service Director.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so there, the two items, uh, the next two items, uh, one of them has a dollar amount, uh, $578,000. The one after that has a dollar amount of $120,000. Uh, the connection there is that $120,000 is part of the $578,000. So the supplemental, which is actually the second, uh, item here, the supplemental appropriation and transfer of the $120,000 item, uh, is coming from the general fund to, uh, basically 425, our, our capital improvements fund. And then on top of that, we have, uh, an additional, uh, request for the, uh, 458,000 piece. So the 458 plus the 120 gives you the total of the 578 that's in the first item there. And it's basically, uh, to, in support of, uh, ordinance 24-022, uh, which was passed by council in February for the purpose of funding approximately $2.2 million of construction activities at Memorial Park for the north phase improvements, uh, parking lots and, and basically adjacent improvements next to the playgrounds slash pad and courts. So we're transferring some money from the general fund, uh, adding it to, uh, some other money and using that money to cover, uh, the construction expenses for the items that were approved back in February.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Rosberg?
Sure.
And any urgency?
Uh, I, I would think that time is of the essence and we're requested consideration at the earliest convenience.
Take care of our bills.
So, number eight will be 24-161.
You say you want me to suspend that?
Yes, please.
Number eight.
And then number nine's 162?
Once, mhm.
You know, they go hand to hand. Mr. Rosberg?
Yes, sir.
Same way? Okay, that brings us to gift cards for our, uh, annual luncheon.
Yes, this is, uh, an ordinance that comes up every year. Um, every December we have a Service Awards Luncheon. You all should have forgotten an invitation for that. We purchase gift cards for employees who have reached milestone years of service, five, 10, 15, 20, 25, et cetera. Um, so they, this will just be used to purchase those gift cards.
Ms. Hanlon, you want to take that? And we have time for a few readings?
Uh, two at the most. It, it does take some time to get the process through.
Put it on second reading.
24-163.
Okay, I believe the next one's yours also.
It is. Structure personnel, we use temporary, uh, workers to come in and do various, uh, different jobs in the service departments, the most notable of which are the leaf breakers that you'll see out and about at, at the current time. Uh, there is no urgency on this, but this is an ordinance also that we bring every year.
Ms. Hines? You'll put that on second?
Yep. 24-165, or four, I'm sorry, 164.
And the next one is yours also?
It is. I have a couple coming up here. So this is the annual ordinance to update, um, and increase the part-time fire and EMS staff. This chart reflects a 5% increase in wages, which is the same as the non-bargaining proposal.
Is this a straight 5% increase?
It is.
Uh, Mr. Parrish?
Thank you.
Put it on second. Okay. All right. Moving along. Uh, ordinance number 13, I believe that's yours as well.
That is mine as well. So this is our annual municipal court, uh, wage increase. Um, this once again reflects a 5% increase for all of the noted wages.
Okay. Mr. Parrish?
Second.
Second reading? Okay. And ordinance 20, or, uh, item number 14?
Item number 14 is also an annual ordinance. This one is increasing the salary of the Assistant Law Director.
Ms. Hanlon?
Okay. Second?
That'll be 24-
Anybody have any questions on that? Did you read the ordinance and the monies and?
I'm trying to find it right now.
Is this a 5% also?
Uh, this one is actually a, a bit more at the request of our Law Director, so I don't know if Brad, if you would like to speak to that?
I can speak to that. So I did a wage study. We're a member of the Ohio Municipal League, so they have a reporting, uh, that they put out every year. So the year of 2023, um, I pulled the salaries for the Assistant Law Directors and City Prosecutors and this would put us at the top of the bottom third, approximately, of the salaries for the Assistant Law Director. Um, it was already a little bit lower, so I had asked it to be moved up because it's, you know, I, I believe I'd sent a listing of the salaries. I'm sorry.
Would we not have to repeal then the, the ordinance that we already set his salary in 2025 and 2026 that we passed last year?
I don't believe so because none of the elected officials' salaries are going to change in this and the Assistant Prosecutor or the Assistant Law Director is not an elected official, so I don't believe that there's any need to repeal this. This is something that we do pretty frequently.
It's an appointed by the Law Director.
Yes.
And what's the new rates?
I'm sorry?
What is the new rates of pay?
The new rate of pay for the Assistant Law Director? It, for next year, it would be $64,686.
Okay.
For someone that has a juris doctrine and, you know, and when I pulled the salaries off the Ohio Municipal League, um, I'd say probably about, I'd say about 40 to 50% of those municipalities put the salaries in there for their city prosecutors slash Assistant Law Directors and there were 22 other cities that pay their individuals higher than what we do. And that's with this new rate too. So it's, I, in my opinion, my humble opinion, it's still well below what we should probably be paying our Assistant Law Director, quite honestly.
And I agree, looking at what your compensation is, you're well below your worth.
Oh, thank you.
No, I mean, but it's true. I mean, you're tied into, because you're an elected official, but that's another one we need to take a look at when we can.
And just for full disclosure, it is approximately a 15.7% increase that's being proposed for the Assistant Law Director.
15.
15.
So that's number 14, that'll be 1, 24-167.
167. And, uh, Ms. Hanlon, we're gonna put that on second, please?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, item number 15, um-
We're going to table.
Yeah, we're gonna table this and just, I think I've talked to everybody on the committee, but I, I formed a commission to look at wages for not only city council, but the treasurer. Um, takes it away from us and lets an outside people, you know, look at what the next council will be meeting.
Making.
Not us. Okay. Uh, number 16.
Okay, this is my last ordinance here. This is the annual, uh, wage scale adjustment. This reflects a 5% increase across the board. Uh, this is for non-bargaining folks only. As usual, we will do a 4% base increase and up to 1% merit.
I honestly feel that it's time we do away with this merit thing. I've gotten numerous complaints that people aren't treated fairly, you know, because of past experiences or something like that. There, I'm all for just giving them a straight 5%.
I, I agree. I agree with that.
I do too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm right there with it. I think straight 5% would be fair.
We had discussed that once before, a couple years ago.
Yeah, I've discussed it every year since I've been here.
Yeah.
Because I worked in that system once before.
So, looking at the ordinance, is, if that's the agreement, you know, to do a straight 5%, is that something we need to amend?
Well, that would be really at the discretion of the appointing authority and administration as to how to structure the raises. Um, it's just the wage scale.
We're just moving the tables, that's all we're doing.
You're moving the tables, correct.
Yeah.
So that can certainly be a discussion that we can have, but today we're just asking for the table movement.
Okay. Discussion?
I'm not real comfortable with that unless it's taken care of already.
What?
I, I want this to be taken care of, the, the, what we're gonna be approving, I want that taken care of before we amend something. Yeah, why amend it and so forth? Let's take care of it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
But I agree that it's the appointing authority that these people work for that decide how it's gonna be administered. We're just approving, pumping the table by 5%.
That's where we have our power, is to-
No, that's beyond, that's, I think that's not our role. I'm sorry. I think our role is to say, yeah, you can pump the table by 5%.
You're asking us to move the table 5%.
Yeah, that's what we're asking for, yes.
And then it's a whole different discussion.
It's a whole different thing.
How that's administered with the four and one. So I, I agree with Susan on this. It's, it's, it's crazy to, we should read it.
We don't need the mic on the end.
Well, I will say that, you know, I was asked if the, or, I don't know, maybe you didn't hear, if delaying the budget, uh, passing to the second reading in December would inhibit me from getting things done. It would not, but as long as the, this ordinance is, is passed by hopefully the first reading in December, I mean, I would need to have that done because there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes into, you know, setting things up for this particular-
I was speaking to the timing of the ordinance.
No, I, I totally get it.
Okay.
Delaying this could slow us down quite a bit.
Council?
If it wants to, if you wanted to go to three readings.
Why not read it? Let's move it to the second reading. We can always amend it if we, for some reason we would amend this, which I don't see why we would.
Ms. Hines, you're awful quiet. What do you, what would you consider?
Just move it to second and if we need to amend it, we can amend it.
You do my thoughts.
Yeah. All right, well, let's read it and we'll vote on it.
Right, I, I think the other issue would be, it's a whole nother issue.
Right.
It, it's not even part of this.
Well, we've talked about this in years past, trying, trying to get away from the Well, we've talked about this in years past, trying, trying to get away from the merit. Because there's some things that just aren't fair.
Yep.
And, uh-
I do agree with that part of it, yes.
Right, but this ordinance is not talking about-
I understand that, but, you know, there's some more too, that we'll have approximately two weeks to have a presentation of how you will do that. And we'll just get it, a first reading in, and then we'll decide what we want to do.
Sounds good.
So, uh, on that one, David, or Mr. Parrish, would you like to read that?
And that's one six eight?
That is one six eight.
And we're gonna put that on second. Uh, next ordinance, that has to do with codified ordinances?
Yeah, I don't know if anyone wants to speak to it. We're still discussing it in EDNP, so I move it to second.
Second.
Okay. That'll be twenty-four dash one six nine.
And the next one, I think that would be yours also, Mr. Urichak?
Same thing, second. Well, there's a memo in here that I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read, but, uh-
I moved it to second. Yeah, let's move to second. That's one seventy?
That'll be, yes, twenty-four one seventy.
And the next one would be yours also, Mr. Urichak?
Same, second.
Seventy-one.
And the next one?
Second.
Second.
One seventy-two.
And we have one more. Um, it would be with the law director.
I'm sorry, I was looking through this. So this ordinance here, um, this would be the city council authorizing us to enter into a settlement on pending litigation that we have at this time. We had discussed this in executive session, at a prior session of city council, and, um, the dollar amount, let me make sure I can find it here. The dollar amount that we would be asking is-
It'd be in the second ordinance, isn't it?
The next ordinance.
Yeah, it'd be a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Oh.
That's not enough.
That's not enough. This is, uh, this is one se, one hundred and seventeen thousand on ordinance, on item twenty-one?
Where's the second page there? I'm sorry, let me, I'm trying to find it listed in here.
Item twenty-two is, uh, for Tucker Ellis, LLP, for ninety-five thousand dollars?
Correct. That's, no, so number twenty-two for the ninety-five thousand, that's just the dollar amount that's already been approved on the other litigation that had gone through.
This is a new litigation?
Yeah, the ordinance, the, item number twenty-one is the new item, the new litigation that we had discussed in executive session. I believe it was last city council meeting. That would be authorizing us as a city, authorizing me to enter into that settlement agreement. Now, item number twenty-two is this the drawing of a warrant for the ninety-five thousand that's already been approved on the Stony Hill lawsuit?
Stone, yeah.
Does that make sense to everyone?
It's two separate cases.
Yeah, it's two separate cases. That's what makes you guys understood. The last one, twenty-two, was the Stony Hill one that's already been approved by council. But that's just allowing us to, to pay the ninety-five thousand.
Okay.
Twenty-one is the new lawsuit that we had discussed in executive session. And that item is asking for council to approve as our portion of the settlement, one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Then everything's agreed upon, so it's just a matter of paying?
Correct, correct. I, I have, in my office, I have copies of the settlement agreement, uh, et cetera. So I, obviously, yeah, and on that one, we'll have to come back, if you approve, we'll have to come back for a supplemental to move the monies again, to, to make sure it's paid. This one right here, though, on number twenty-one, that's just your approval to enter into that settlement agreement for the one hundred and seventeen thousand.
Any questions there?
Nope.
Uh, Ms. Hanlon, would you take that, please?
Which one, twenty-one?
Uh, item twenty-one.
Okay.
Twenty-four dash one seven three.
And that goes to second? Or does that mean it's suspended call?
Yeah, that would have to be a suspended call, so we could enter into that.
Okay. And then the next one? Uh, so that's a settlement on the Stony Hill?
Correct, that we've already, council's already approved. It's just a matter of moving the money and making sure that we-
Would you take that one also, Ms. Hanlon?
Okay. Twenty-four dash one seven four.
And suspended call?
Please.
Okay, now we are to our city council review, uh, third reading, uh, regarding our water rates, Mr. Stugmeyer?
Yeah, both of those, the twenty-four one forty-five and the twenty-four one forty-six, ones the, uh, ones the water, ones the sewer, those are on third reading. We'll call those this evening.
Yep.
Okay. On sixth reading, Mr. Urichak?
Call.
Call. And the next one also?
Call.
Okay, that brings us to other business. I think we've had a sufficient update on the, uh, airport hangars. Is there anything else you want to discuss, Mr. Testa?
No, nothing for me.
Okay. Uh, the next is the Vanci annexation, Mr. Morris?
Sure, wanted to give you an update of what's going on. Uh, and then we gotta make some decisions as to how we want to proceed. Uh, what's going on is they filed, my understanding, they have filed or will file eminently, uh, the annexation, uh, for that property that we discussed in the work session. Uh, the, that connects Smoke Rise Drive and Hartman Road ultimately, if so, passed. Um, when they file, it triggers the new rule twenty-three, that tells us what, what the procedure is going to be, um, because that's when the timetable starts, and we got that twenty-day, uh, deadline hanging over our head. Typically, when they file something now, we would trigger a work session. We've already had that work session. Uh, at that work session, we talked about the comprehensive plan, uh, the importance of Smoke Rise, we talked about the annexation schedule, what that area would work for. Uh, we had a concept plan that was presented, um, then showed some examples of what some of those units would look like. Um, now we're at the fork in the road. Uh, we're at the fork in the road. According to twenty-three, we're gonna do one of three things. Either we don't have enough information as council, and we're gonna continue it off to, uh, committee. Uh, we have enough information, and we're ready to move forward with a, with the, um, legislation for the resolution of services. Or you have enough, and you say, Tom, let's lock everybody in, and we can start working on those pre-annexation agreements. Uh, I've been working on one, so if they have a sample for you, uh, but I need to hear from you kind of collectively as a, as one voice, as to how you want me to proceed, uh, at this stage. More information, going to committee, or lock this down with a pre-annexation agreement, or, uh, let's just go ready for normal course, uh, and we'll go for that resolution of services. So I'm here for any questions you have about that. Um, talk about the TIF, if you want to talk about that, what that looks like. We'll talk about, uh, the annex, or the rezoning of that other parcel, if you want to talk about that, whatever questions you may have, so we can move it forward, uh, at this crossroads.
I've looked at the information that was passed out and everything. I'm of the opinion that we need to have a secondary connection point, like at one park center, because of the number of houses that's back in there and everything.
A secondary connection to Park Center?
A road.
Okay, not the, we talked, and I believe Mr. Rossberg talked about a secondary connection onto Hartman.
And I've looked at also, and I'd like to see if they could get some kind of easements and maybe continue Park Center on through to Hartman, so that they could bring another road through. Because if we have a disaster up on that end of town, or something, we got one ingress, one, one entrance, one exit. That's, that's one at Hartman, one at, uh, High Street. That's also gonna be traffic, a, a greater amount of traffic there. If we could split that between two streets, I think we'd be much better off.
And just so you know, the process, one of the things that we're gonna talk about is a traffic study that's gonna address exactly those issues, and when we get to the engineering stage. So while we have a general concept, it is just that, a general concept, um, with, with a, a traffic study coming through saying, hey, that's not enough for ingress and ingress, that's a problem. Uh, or our own safety coming in saying, that's an issue because, uh, you know, the, they need, um, fire hydrants within a certain period, or the, the hose only goes this far. But those are the engineering portions, that's the hard work that comes in the next fifteen months, um, after this has occurred. But really what we're trying to figure out now is, do we want this parcel, or for the annexation purposes, uh, are we ready to say services are available? Are we ready to enter an annexation agreement to say zoning-wise is generally okay? Um, keep in mind, we have to do engineering. Uh, or, uh, is this something where we said, we, some of those issues are not, uh, clear, we need to talk at committee about those. And I would suggest that engineering is probably not gonna be a committee talk, that's probably more, uh, for a later time, but certainly keep you in the loop.
I would send it to safety committee.
Yeah.
For discussion, yes.
Yeah, and seeing Mr. Rossberg, you know, another ingress to the allotment, I could see, I'm not sure about going all the way to, you know, two of them, to Hartman Road because of safety concerns coming over that bridge. But off of Park Center, I, I can see the need there.
I'd love to see Park Center continue into the allotment somehow.
And that's all things that would be considered way down the road.
Yeah.
At this point, it's just where we, um, are we agreeable to the general concept that was presented to move to the next stage of creating a little more detail and a little more binding sort of a thing with the pre-
Pre-annexation agreement.
Yeah, the annexation agreement, right.
To talk about a general concept plan. And, so, we would say, it's gonna, what I don't want to happen is a bait and switch, and that's what I always-
Right.
Concern, I heard the concern from you, that you say you're gonna do this, but you're really gonna do this. So I'm gonna lock them in. They wanna lock us in, that says that we're gonna, you're gonna come in, you're gonna let us, uh, build something that's, that they're gonna be able to make money on. Um, so-
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the annex, I'm, I'm in favor of moving it forward at this point. So letting him move it forward and say, let's-
With the agreement.
Work on a pre-annexation agreement, right?
Yeah, if you guys want to speak with one voice on that, and so that I know that you're all kind of on the same page-
Right.
-on that, um, I can certainly try that. You would see the pre-annexation agreement before we entered into it, I would get authorization from council, uh, to have the-
So that's just the next piece of information.
That would be the next piece of information for you.
I'm fine with that.
So this particular concept with the lot sizes and townhomes, are you all agreeable with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's a good use of that language.
Yep.
Because I think that's the big, big question.
Right.
Well, let me do this then. Uh, if I, if I'm hearing you, I'll prepare an annexation agreement-
Yeah.
Uh, so that you can look at it, so that we can lock it in, uh, to make sure that there's, uh, concerns. Uh, if there are some engineering issues you want, obviously we don't have a, a, um, transportation person on staff, that's gonna be part of it, we can eyeball it as best we can, though. Um, some of the, the ingress from Park Center's gonna involve a third party, because that's parcels that nobody is under contract with. Uh, I'd love to see that as well. Um, so if there's any other questions, I'm more than happy to talk about it. Otherwise, I was gonna start working on the pre-annexation.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Nice job, Mr. Morris. Any other business from council, from administration? Entertaining motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second. We are adjourned. For the regular meeting of city council, please, for Wednesday, November sixth, twenty twenty-four, please come to order. We please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag, and then the invocation will begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mighty God, who has given us this good land to be our heritage, we acknowledge our dependence on you for all things, and we thank you for your blessings, including the right and privilege to govern ourselves in this free land. We pray that you would grant us all wisdom to make good decisions for the future of this community. Through Christ our Lord, we pray.
Amen.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Rossberg?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Urichak?
Here.
You've all had the opportunity to review the minutes of the regular city council meeting of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the city council work session of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. May I have a motion to approve them?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any visitors in the auditorium that'd like to speak to council? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you can keep minutes around two, three minutes, that'd be great. All right, yes, please.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, thank you council members, Mr. President, uh, for allowing me the time to come before you to present my, in my son's position regarding the hangar issue at the Wadsworth Airport. My name-
Excuse me, name and address?
I'm getting, yeah, I-
Sorry.
I have my notes here, I didn't write it down, sorry. Yeah, uh, yeah. Matthew Tomcheck, uh, address is six six three nine, Buffen Road, Seville, Ohio, uh, four four two seven three. And I'll also mention, um, uh, my son, he is a resident of Wadsworth, and I believe he's in, in year war, Mr. Copley, uh, in Weatherstone, uh, five thirty-eight Weatherstone, if you need his address also. So, um, just kind of a brief background, aviation has been my vocation and passion. After serving my country in the Air Force, I pursued a career with the Federal Aviation Administration. Um, currently, I work as a independent aviation contractor throughout Ohio and Michigan and other places. Regarding the, the hangars, as our airplane we have hangered at the airport is used for several purposes. Um, I use the airport for my contract work, and my son also uses the airplane for his, his work throughout the northeast Ohio area. We also use our airplane to conduct voluntary flights through the Experimental Aircraft Association, the Young Eagles program. Um, we, uh, we have flown many children as an indoctrination to aviation, and also, we provide STEM opportunities for these youth as they're at the hangar while we're, while we're flying there. So it's a, it's a great outreach for the youth in the area. And it should be noted, we all do this out of our own pocket. You know, it's not subsidized by any organization, we do this out of our own pocket. And we also do flights for, uh, like, members of our church we attend, and also for, um, uh, our community, like Josh's neighbors. He's taken several of his neighbors up for rights, as an introduction aviation. Now, regarding the, uh, the pending eviction of our hangar, if this indeed happens, it will create a tremendous hardship for our families here. My son and I have a significant investment in this airplane. What you may not know is that finding a hangar space is next to impossible throughout the area here. Uh, I have made inquiries in several airports in the area, and they all have lengthy waiting lists, and, um, there are several people on that same boat. Since the lease expired in twenty nineteen, I have attended every meeting with the, with the city officials, and actually it was at the request of the city that a lawyer be used to draft an association bylaws, so that the city would work with an association rather than individual tenants. I feel I've been negotiating in good faith with the city through a lawyer to come to an amiable resolution. However, lately I've sensed that the lawyer and another party in this dispute has not been acting in good faith. It seems our purpose is to lit, litigate this issue to death, which from my perspective is not the path I want to go down. I and my son have totally removed ourselves from this relationship with this lawyer and the other parties, uh, wanting to litigate this dispute. We see no outcome favorable for anyone if that happens. I was served a letter of eviction for not paying rent. During the negotiation back from twenty nineteen, I was never requested to pay rent. And to be honest, if I had, I would have begun paying rent immediately. Yeah, I'm responsible, you know, I pay my taxes. Um, you know, I always try to work above board and have integrity on my actions. So it's, if it was asked, we would have done it. My son and his family are residents of Wadsworth. Although my wife and I are not residents of Wadsworth, we do feel this is our community. Uh, and most of our relationships are in Wadsworth. Uh, as grandparents, we feel Wadsworth is a great community, uh, to raise a family and support our grandchildren through their school activities, and, um, actually participating in a veterans event coming up here in a couple of weeks at the local elementary school. Speaking for myself and my son, we are proposing that immediately, we start paying rent for the, for the hangars that we have. We have two hangars we occupy, and to be excluded from any pending lawsuit for eviction. I see this as beneficial for the city, so you'll start receiving some immediate revenue from our, and, you know, we could do it monthly, you know, semi-annually or annually, whatever, you know, whatever kind of term that would be acceptable. Um, for us, there, for us, there really is no other, uh, option to pursue, because there just aren't hangar spaces. Um, you know, like you, uh, our airplane, yeah, has value to it, has some, uh, if we let it sit outside, it's just gonna deteriorate, and that's really, really not an option. So with that said, again, I thank you for your time, I appreciate it. And, uh, we just, uh, asked that you give consideration for our, our position, and, um, I will say, we're not the only ones in this position. There are some that want to pursue, and others just, we wanted this done a long time ago, and, um, unfortunately, here we are. So, thank you again.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
And it's our policy not to address your, you know, but if you'd like to stay afterwards, we'd be happy to talk to you.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address city council? Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Very good. Next, we have, uh, committee commission updates. Um, city council, committee the whole met tonight at five thirty and discussed several items. Um, public service committee, Mr. Stugmeyer?
Public service committee will, uh, meet on Monday, November the eighteenth, five thirty PM, here in council chambers.
Public safety committee, Mr. Copley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting on public safety will be next Wednesday evening, uh, November the thirteenth, at six o'clock PM, and here in council chambers.
Uh, public waste committee, Mr. Rossberg?
Public waste will meet Wednesday, November twentieth, here in council chambers at five PM.
Economic development planning committee, Mr. Urichak?
Uh, economic development planning committee will next meet on November twentieth at six PM in council chambers.
Okay. Airport commission, Mr. Stug- Okay. Airport commission, Mr. Stugmeyer.
Airport commission will next meet on Wednesday, uh, November the 13th, at 4:30 PM, here in council chambers.
Stormwater commission, Mr. Copley.
Stormwater commission does not have a meeting scheduled at this time.
Okay. Chaitree commission, Ms. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will be meeting on Tuesday, April 22nd, at 5:00 PM, right here in council chambers.
Very good. Planning commission will meet Monday, the 25th of November, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Cemetery board, Mr. Yurichak.
Cemetery board will next meet on November 20th at 5:00 PM in the finance conference room upstairs.
Very good. Cable TV commission, Ms. Hanlon.
Cable TV commission will meet on Thursday, December 5th, at 4 o'clock, in council chambers.
And senior citizens commission, Mr. Parrish.
Yes, the senior citizen commi- commission will meet, uh, December 2nd, Monday, at 3:30 at Suprema Center.
Very good. That brings us to the reading of the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first ordinance is number 24-150 through 24-155. I'm going to go ahead and read them straight through, and then council can, um, act on them as a group. So ordinance number 24-150 on first reading, they're all on first reading, and ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2023 sanitary sewer project, college wolf lining, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-151, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2024 sanitary sewer jet slash that combo truck and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-152, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of the bond for the purpose of financing the 2024 water jet that combo truck and declaring an emergency. Did I say that twice?
You need to be minister.
Okay. Um, I might be missing one in here. Okay. All right, I am missing one. So. Let me read this one. I found 24-150. Sherry has them all numbered. Um.
Use the next one.
How did I get those mixed up? All right, I'm going to read them from the actual ordinance. Okay, I'm going to start over. 2024, okay. That's the jet. All right, so we're going to start with 24-150. Should I ask the law director how I should do this?
Mr. Proudfoot, we have a question.
Yeah.
So the numbers are inaccurate.
Okay.
For what I have on the agenda. Can I read them from the ordinance itself?
Yeah, that's fine. You can make the verbal adjustment.
Okay, so we'll go by the actual ordinances for these.
So I would just recommend if you're keeping these for your records, council members, write down the proper.
Ordinance number, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so ordinance number 24-150. An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2023 state RD pump and generator project and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-151, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2024 sanitary sewer jet that combo truck and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 24-152, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2024 water jet that combo truck and declaring an emergency. 24-153, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2024 sewer lining project and declaring an emergency. 24, ordinance 24-154, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2024 sanitary sewer WWTP equipment and declaring an emergency. And 20, ordinance number 24-155, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2023 sanitary sewer project, college wolf lining, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion, uh, to, uh, suspend the three reading rule collectively on ordinances number 24-150 through 24-155.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
And Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. President, I, uh, call the question on, collectively, on ordinances 24-150 through 24-155.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Stugmeyer's proposal, call to question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance numbers 24-150 through 24-155?
Yurichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
And Hanlon?
Yes.
Ordinance numbers 24-150 through 24-155 has been adopted.
And we have ordinance number 24-156 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to repeal ordinance number 24-105, adopted on October 15th, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-156.
Second.
Copley?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call a question on ordinance number 24-156.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Yurichak's proposal, call to question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-156?
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
And Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-156 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-157 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to provide for the issuance of a bond in the principal amount of $27,283.13 in anticipation of the collection of special assessments heretofore levied to pay the property owner's portion of the cost of the 2022-2023 sidewalk program improvements and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-157.
Second.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Whoop, I'm sorry.
Call the question.
Mr. President, I move to call the question on ordinance number 24-157.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Yurichak's proposal, call to question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-157?
Yurichak?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-157 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-158 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend section 34.36 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to provide for the allocation of income tax receipts of $3,779,416 during fiscal year 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number 24-158 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-158 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-159 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to authorize transfers for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, and to declare an emergency.
Uh, Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-159.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President, I call to question on, on ordinance number 1, 24-159.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Parrish's proposal to call to question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-159?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
And Rosberg?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-159 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-160 on first reading sponsored by council member Susan Hanlon and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $5,800 in the 110 general fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 24-160 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
24 dash, ordinance number 24-160 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-161 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $578,326 in various funds for purposes, for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-161.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call to question on ordinance number 24-161.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Rosberg's proposal, call to question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-161?
Hanlon?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-161 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-162 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg, discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to authorize transfer of $120,000 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-162.
Second.
Copley?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call to question on ordinance number 24-162.
Hearing no objection to Mr. Rosberg's proposal, call to question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-162?
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-162 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 24-163 on first reading sponsored by council member Susan Hanlon and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance authorizing expenditures for gift cards to be presented at the annual employee recognition event to city employees who in 2024 reached service milestones of five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, and 40 years of service and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 24-163 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-163 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-164 on first reading sponsored by council member Jeanne Heinz and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance authorizing the director of public service to enter into a contract with Structure Personnel Incorporated for the leasing of employees from said employment agency to be responsible for the seasonal flushing of hydrants, seasonal collection of yard waste and leaves, and other needs and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 24-164 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-164 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-165 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to change the compensation rate for the volunteer fire service and EMS service employees and declaring an emergency.
Uh, Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 24-165 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, I see.
Ordinance number 24-165 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-166 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to amend sections 35.44 and 35.46 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to increase the compensation for the clerk of the municipal court and for the chief probation officer and for the probation assistant and declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance 24-167 on second reading.
Six six.
Six six, I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-166 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-167 on first reading sponsored by council member Susan Hanlon and discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to increase the compensation for the assistant director of law beginning in calendar year 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move we place ordinance number 24-167 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-167 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-168 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish, discuss at committee of the whole. An ordinance to change the compensation schedule for various city officers and employees and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 24-168 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Who, who said no?
I would like to discuss that further at our next meeting.
So is that a yes or a no?
I said, at committee of the whole to amend. We might need to amend that.
So how did you vote?
I vote we move it to second and discuss it further.
Yeah, so it's.
No.
That's it. So we got one, two, three, five yeses, two noes.
Okay.
So I can go to second.
168.
Ordinance number 168 has been placed on second reading.
Okay. Ordinance number 24-169 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak and discuss at economic development and planning. An ordinance to amend sections 53.16, 97.15, 153.050, 153.051, 153.052, and 153.053, and to delete sections 53.02, 97.30, 97.31, 153.054, 153.056, and 154.077 on the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 24-169 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-169 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-170 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak and discuss at economic development and planning. An ordinance to enact chapter 157 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move we place ordinance number 24-170 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-170 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-171 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak and discuss at economic development and planning. An ordinance to enact chapter 158 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move we place ordinance number 24-171 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-171 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-172 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurichak[1736.28] and discussed at economic development and planning. An ordinance to establish impact fees for chapter 158 of the codified ordinances of the City of Wadsworth and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move we place ordinance number 24-172 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 24-172 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 24-173 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Susan Hanlon and discussed at Committee of the Whole. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Law to enter into a settlement agreement and mutual release to settle the case of Paradise Homes of Medina Incorporated versus City of Wadsworth, Ohio, case number 2024CIVO364, pending in Medina County Common Police Court and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 24-17, oh, I'm sorry. I would like, no, I move that we, uh, suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 24-173.
Second.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Urecheck?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
And Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. President, I move we call the question on ordinance number 24-173.
Hearing no objection to Mr., excuse me, Mrs. Hanlon's proposal to call the question, uh, will the clerk please, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 24-173?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Urecheck?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Urecheck?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
And Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. President, I move we call the question on ordinance number 24-174.
Second.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.